In this meeting, it is the November 20th meeting of the Durango City Council. This is a regular meeting, rescheduled from Tuesday to Monday owing to the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday. Time is 6:32. We begin with a roll call.
Councilor Bettin. Councilor Brokey.
Here.
Councilor Yussaf.
Here.
Mayor Protem Marbury.
Here.
Mayor White.
Here. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation. This is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Whereas, the government of Durango, Colorado celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States, and they represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States. They're responsible for 63% of new, net new jobs created over the last 20 years. And whereas, small businesses employ 48% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas, on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently owned retailers and restaurants. And whereas, 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently owned restaurants and bars is important. And whereas, 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. Whereas, Durango, and whereas, Durango, Colorado supports our small, our local businesses to create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Dick White, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses emergence on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And to accept the proclamation tonight, we have the Director Selmeritis, who's the Executive Director of La Plata Economic Alliance.
Mayor, thank you very much. A few words, folks.
Sure.
Well, everybody, thank you. Sorry for being a little dressed down today for this, but we just decided at the last minute to do a little trip out to Moab and came back in 10 minutes ago, so thanks for accepting this, and thanks for putting out this proclamation for Small Business Saturday as well. You know, small businesses are important in the U.S., and they're important really out here in Durango and small towns like ours especially. I don't think, according to the census, we have a large business in La Plata County. I think everything out here is small businesses. But Small Business Saturday is really important. One, I'm trying to convince my wife to let me go skiing on Black Friday, and I think this is a good reason for her to shop on Saturday instead, but also don't forget Noel Nights coming up Friday, December 1st, which is the ultimate celebration of our small businesses here in Durango. So please be sure to save some cash and get out and get downtown and shop on Noel Night too. So thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you, Roger. The next item on the agenda is the review of the consent agenda. May we have a reading, please?
Item 4.1 is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of October 17th, 2017. 4.2 is approval of the minutes for the special study session of November 7th, 2017. 4.3 is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of November 7th, 2017. 4.4 is a request for public hearing to consider the granting of an easement to La Plata Electric Association for Underground Utilities under city-owned land located at the Durango-San Arido Water Reclamation Facility located at 105 South Camino del Rio. 4.5 is approval of, final approval of ordinance 021715, amending Chapter 27 of the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code by amendment, the addition of positions of sections, tables, and definitions in said land use and development code as set forth herein and declaring an effective date.
Does any member of the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Any member of the council?
With that, Mayor, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded. It's moved and seconded. May we have a roll call?
Councilor Brokey.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Marbury.
Yes.
Councilor Yussaf.
Yes.
And Mayor White.
Yes. Moving on, we come to public participation. Any member of the public may come up and address the council for five minutes. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, and this is regarding any topic that's not already agendized for public hearing. And any AV materials must be provided to the city clerk by noon of the meeting day. So looking forward to the future, anyone who aspires to actually come to public participation with some audiovisual materials, please remember that. Does any member of the public wish to speak to the council tonight?
Well, Mayor, I've asked my good friend Jim Bowen from the Salvation Army to come tonight to talk about bell ringing opportunities in Durango. So thank you so much, Jim, for coming to council tonight.
Yeah, Jim Bowen, 213 Jenkins Road. Yeah, and thanks, sweetie, for being on our board, sweetie's on our board for many years, and has done a great job for us. Yeah, bell ringing starts tomorrow, Tuesday, and goes to 24th of December. And the amount of money we raise is a direct correlation with the amount of ringers we get. So I'm here to ask everybody here if they can use all their resources to get us as many ringers as we can, because we make more money. Last year, we made a little over $100,000, I think about $105,000, sweetie, was it, I think, for our ringers? You know, we also have a, for businesses, the small businesses and such, matching kettle campaign. And with that, a business will match a kettle up to a certain amount for a day at a spot. So for the local businesses, that's a great way to help the community. Basically, you know, our money's distributed as emergency assistance, that's what we do. You know, 90% of our funds are, come from the Christmas season, so this is the very, very important time of year for us to raise money. You know, we're in Salvation Army, we don't have any paid staff. We actually don't have anybody from the Salvation Army, a member of that Christian organization, on our board. We're a multiple-denominational group, our board, we come from all denominations, and we all come together to raise money for emergency assistance. You know, the bell ringers are, our bell ringers are, well, are unpaid, as well as our board. So basically, here in Durango, our only expenses are replacing bells that break, Santa hat that's missing, some stationery, and that's it. So when you get here, basically, all the money's going towards charity. We're under the umbrella Salvation Army, I think the tightening is 10%, so we give 10% to the national organization, which goes, of course, to very worthy national causes. But the other 90% stays here, and really, no administration fees at all for that, so you really get a real bang for your buck when you put money in the kettle. Basically, what, you know, what we do are donations, some of the things we do is the DOA Shelter, Manistoo Kitchen, SEEK is our big one, Community Emergency Assistance Coalition that we meet every Friday. And with that, we look at applications for emergency needs and it's fed it by a board that Salvation Army sits on, among other people, Roundup is on their services, or community services from the city sit on that. And we distribute the money, we look at the cases and see which ones are the worthy ones, and we bet the people and give money to emergency needs. I think the, you know, we work under Salvation Army, that's the group, and through them, because Salvation Army's got a high credibility, we're able to basically go out there and then do this. People see that sign and feel confident the money's going to go to good causes. I should say, you know, we're, I mean Salvation Army's a Christian organization, but, you know, we serve all people, regardless of religion, race, or sexual persuasion. We don't discriminate at all, somebody needs a need, we serve them. So I'm hoping that, I know some of the people I've seen ring the bell, or the Noel Night, Dick White and Dean Brokey, thanks for your help in the past, and Chris Sweetie. And just want to bring the word out, I'm the bell ring coordinator for the season, so my number will be announced in the paper, but if you want to, my number is 259-1506. So I'm trying to gather all the bell ringers, and, you know, people should just let me know when they can ring, when they cannot ring, and I'll get them to the spots and the people that we need right now. So we're always scrambling to get ringers, and we all kind of panic a little bit, but, you know, and always in the past, Durango's always come through, and we get people boned here, and it's a really worthwhile, actually, thing to do, you feel really good when you do it. So I just want to thank everybody and thank the community for what you've done in the past, and we're going to have a good Christmas season, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one more time, that number is 259-1506, to sign up to ring a bell.
Any other member of the public who wishes to address the council tonight? Seeing none, I will move on to council reports and actions.
Well, I'll be happy to start, is that okay?
Well, thank you, Jim, for coming tonight, because Salvation Army makes a huge difference in La Plata County, and we all know that. The Red Kettle is what keeps people from being evicted, for example, provides help with their rent, with car repairs, and it's one of the most inspiring things I've ever done with my life. Also, I'm on the library board, so here's my challenge, let's get library cards going. The city is always a little bit under the county cardholders. So here's my challenge for you out there, over the holidays, take your children to the library and sign up for a library card, or maybe you, just something you haven't quite done yet. Well, let's get those numbers up for the city. Also, there's books by mail. You can call the library, and if you have a homebound friend or family member, books can be mailed to their house. There's a wonderful photography exhibit, it's called Through Lila's Eyes, and it was a jury photography competition, it's on display at the library and through the lobby area. I really hope you get a chance to go down there. There's also some donation boxes at the library for, from friends of the library. So if you have a couple pennies, put them in that box, and it will help keep the programs free for participants at the Durango Library. Mayor, I've asked our city manager to give a sales tax and a lodger's tax report, and also to clarify some numbers we talked about, about our sewer and our sustainability on our utilities bill. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Marbury. So we have some good news this month. This is the October sales tax report, which reflects sales that occurred in September. Sales tax was up 6%.
Yay!
And that brings the year-to-date at 2%. Lodger's tax was up 13.1%, and year-to-date is 6.9%. And that, you know, that's good news, it's a strong month. However, I'm still bewildered as to why the sales tax is so erratic. I don't recall anything special about September that would have produced a 6% increase, and you'll remember some of our bigger months over the summer showed decreases when we thought the town was pretty full. So I am perplexed, and if we can't really understand what's driving this up and down erratic, it's hard for us to address mitigating factors, so I'll take the good news, and we'll continue to study and try to develop some understanding. And then maybe I can explain the utility bill changes. And let me start off by saying, in 2017, if you added together water, sewer, trash, recycling, and the spring-fall cleanup, the total on an average residential user based on 7,000 gallons of water and 3,000 gallons of sewer per month, those total up to $110.81. In 2018, the city council is going to approve a budget on December the 5th, and the council has directed staff to have no water increase, so water stays the same. Sewer will go up slightly, $3 and, hold on.
I think it's $1.46.
$1.46 per month on sewer. 60-gallon trash cans stays the same, recycling stays the same, and then for better transparency, the cost of our sustainability program will be new, and that's a new line item, that's $2.30. Spring-fall cleanup is $1.50. So that brings the 2018 total to $114.56, or a total of $3.76 a month increase, and if I take $3.76 as a percent of increase over $110.81, I come up with, I think it's 2.6% increase.
Okay, I really appreciate that, because there was some, there were some emails and some conversations, so let's just review, $1.46 a month on the sewer is going to go up, and $2.30 will be a line item under sustainability. And of course, that encompasses many projects that the city will be looking at, everything from solar to climate to lots of future projects. So thank you very much for that, those accurate numbers on the utility bill.
Okay.
I have some very good news for one of our local companies, actually, out of Bayfield, and that is the Office of Economic Development and International Trade has announced their grant recipients for their proof of concepts, or proof of concept and early-stage capital and retention grants to support Colorado's advanced industries. This amazing program is designed to promote and support Colorado companies that meet a market need, benefit Colorado by growing jobs or retaining jobs, and have products that are created or manufactured here in Colorado. The program is also designed to intentionally distribute funds around the various regions throughout the state. $3.2 million were distributed in this cycle of grant funding, and the good news is that one of our local companies, Tailwind Nutrition, is one of the recipients of those grants. Tailwind Nutrition manufactures and sells endurance sports and recovery drinks for athletes training and competing in two-hour-plus sports. They intend to use their funds to grow their marketing and sales, and intend to hire six new employees by the end of this year. This type of program that we are offering here through the state offers significant funding opportunities for regions like ourselves to grow jobs, diversify our local economy, and support our businesses. If you'd like more information, please feel free to reach out to me, I would be very happy to put you in touch with people. And congratulations to Jenny and Jeff Beerlings for Tailwind Nutrition. I also wanted to say that several of us here on the council attended the DOA luncheon at the Doubletree Hotel, it was a packed house. The Volunteers of America had a big reason to celebrate this year, celebrating a milestone of helping 25,000 children, women, and men, since they have been started their services 32 years ago. Rachel Bowsky-Frazier, the Division Director for DOA Southwest Colorado, shared facts and figures, and I just wanted to go over just a few of those, because they were very impressive, it was a very powerful luncheon. In 2016, the DOA, which also encompasses the Southwest Safe House and the Durango Community Shelter, served 735 people, including 412 men and women. They provided 16,978 nights of safe shelter. In 2016, 82% of the adults at the Durango Community Shelter, through their extended stay program, obtained safe, stable employment. 88% of the veterans served for their veteran transitional housing program, were able to secure safe, affordable, long-term housing. 95% of the women served by the Southwest Safe House did not return to an abusive partner upon exit, and 95% of the school-aged children served at the school, Safe House, attended school regularly. I wanted to thank the DOA, the Durango Community Shelter, and our Southwest Safe House for providing such critical services for our members of this community in need. That's it, thank you.
Awesome. Well, as I announced a couple weeks ago, I did make a trip to Washington, D.C. I spent the day with Environmental Defense on studying the EPA budget. As you've come to know, City Durango's was paramount in establishing the need for the Superfund, the Need to Peak Superfund, and we've continually asked for continued funding of that effort. So my primary purpose was to go back, understand what was happening to the EPA budget, and follow up with Senators Bennett, Gardner, and Representative Tipton to ask what, in fact, they are doing to protect that fund. The fund is, overall EPA as an organization is being cut back 37%. That is primarily jobs and the fund programs. So once the people are gone, the programs will implode, and EPA is a vacuum of its former self. What that means in Colorado, as I explained to Senator Gardner, was about 20,000 jobs across the state, many of them right here in our community, which is why it's important to Durango, as well as the continued funding of the Superfund itself. So with that, under the guise of deregulation, we are really losing a number of jobs in the environmental community throughout the state. So Michael Bennett was very supportive, Cory Gardner actually was very supportive, and Scott Tipton was out to lunch, not to, it was lunchtime, seriously, so it's like we didn't have an opportunity to talk to him. So at any rate, these are basic things, some of the things are just X out of the EPA line items are radon. Radon as an event is no longer regulated, and so those industries, for those of you that have radon protection put in your homes, that is no longer regulated by the EPA, no longer under government control. Another thing, lead-based paint, in my industry, as an architect, we, anytime we go into a remodel, we do mitigation for lead-based paint. It's been known for long term that it's a health hazard to, especially to young children. That's no longer funded by the EPA, the program, the certifications for lead-based paint inspectors, that's just gone from the budget. It's not even reduced, that's just gone. So it's very, you know, it's very impactful, and it'll show up quickly in our lives if this budget is passed, so that's what, in fact, we were hopeful of, we can count on Senator Bennett, hopefully Senator Gardner, to not pass that portion of the budget. So with that, that's all, that's all we had to do back there. It was not a particularly wonderful trip, no taxpayer dollars, I should say, spent on this trip, but thanks, City Durango did not have to pay for this trip, so it was, hopefully, hopefully we protected our funding and have another trip, got invited back to talk to the EPA one more time, so anyway, thank you.
Okay. I will fill in something I've been missing from week to week over the last few meetings. I do continue my practice of Thursday office hours, not on Thanksgiving Day, thank you, but once again, next week, on the Thursday, the 30th, I'll be in the conference room across the hall at 11:30. I may, it was very interesting, I've done one experiment of having, announcing coffee with the mayor at Steaming Bean, and when it was announced in the newspaper, I got four people come, when it wasn't announced in the newspaper, even though it was on the city calendar, nobody came. So I have a conflict on the, I believe it's the second Tuesdays, so in, early in December, I'll probably switch back and try that again. I'm sorry to have missed the DOA luncheon, I had a conflicting event, which was the Climate Symposium at Fort Lewis College. I have attended the DOA luncheon in the past, and certainly, our check is in the mail. But the climate symposium worked out to be extraordinarily good. Kevin Trendberth of National Center for Atmospheric Research was the keynote speaker, and they had several other speakers from Fort Lewis College, and one from the USDA, who is the, I believe she's the Regional Director for Climate Research for the USDA, but she also happens to be married to the new dean of business school. But she's now based in Durango, which is really good news for us. It was very well attended, they were hoping for 200 people, and they kept having to put out more chairs, it was somewhere over 300, I don't think that was an accurate count. I had one major take-home lesson from Dr. Trendberth's talk. He sort of ended his talk with slides of the devastation from the recent hurricanes, especially in Texas, and he said, "We're not preparing for the consequences that we know are coming from climate change." So that is a, sort of a backdrop for the climate protection efforts that the council was undertaking. Several of us marched in the Veterans Day Parade, which was great. I also gave some brief remarks at the Transit Center events as the temperature was falling rapidly before the fireworks, but the fireworks were great. And it seemed to be an extraordinarily good way to use the fireworks from our canceled fireworks display to particularly call out the service of the Durango Fire Protection District and the critical work that they did in helping to suppress that fire, which really could have been a disaster for Durango. Last night, I attended the Day of Transgender Rights meeting at the Unitarian Universalists Fellowship. This is to honor lives lost to hate and violence. The number, and they read individual names where were available, more than 300 people worldwide, mostly women, of whom about 25 were in the United States, who died violently owing to the fact that they were perceived as transgendered. Sadly, this violence has increased in 2017 in the United States, and it is pervasive, and no group is more targeted, and it was a sobering event to participate in. On the bright side, there are a couple of really good ones. We learned a week or so ago that Durango is the first community in the nation to be featured in a series of case studies developed jointly by the Green Electronics Council and the ICLE, which is the, actually simply calls itself, that's, it used to be an acronym, now it's just the name for local governments for sustainability, on how communities use tools to achieve sustainability goals. The city has been selected as a case study for the use of electronic product environmental assessment tool, registered information technology products, and the ClearPath emissions tracking software to use the city's sustainability, to achieve the city's sustainability goals. So it's really cool to have the city's efforts on this front highlighted. And also, we got news on Thursday afternoon that the State Transportation Board had recommended 99, approval of the $99.6 million project to complete US 550 down to the Grand View Interchange. The erstwhile Bridge to Nowhere is now, will be known as the Bridge to the Future. It was an amazing effort by Mike McVaw and C.DOT to assemble an astonishing array of fiscal pieces, plus some regional collaboration to assemble support, including the city, the county, the southern county, the Southern Uden Indian Tribe, and active support from our State Transportation Board representatives at Zink, who we all know, or maybe most of us know, as a former mayor and city councillor. This was really terrific news. We do hope that at some point that Durango Herald will actually cover it. And finally, we've already heard tonight that Noel Night will be our local shopping Christmas extravaganza all day on December first. Please come, shop local, and celebrate. And with that, we will turn to the public hearings that are scheduled on tonight's agendas. The first, we have legislative, several legislative hearings. By previous act of the council and publication, the following proposed ordinance or topics have been set for hearing at this meeting. These hearings are an opportunity for citizens to provide formal input to the city council decision-making process. The format is organized and secure fairness to all parties involved. Hearing portion of this meeting will end at nine-thirty P.M. We're starting at seven, I do hope we won't get there, unless otherwise extended by motion, and if necessary, it will be continued to either a special meeting or the next regularly scheduled council meeting. The council is pleased to welcome all public testimony, but does ask that it be relevant to the issue at hand. And the first is item number nine point one point one, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to confirm the current organizational structure. Mr. LeBlanc.
Thank you, Mayor White. It's my privilege tonight to do something that is in the best interest of public transparency. We have made some changes within the city organization during the past year, and I thought it was best for the city council and staff to be on the record summarizing what those changes are, and I would also note that as those changes were made, per the charter the council has acted previously to create the departments that were changed. But under the city charter, the city of Colorado, of Durango, Colorado, gives the council the authority to create, amend, and abolish departments, offices, or agencies of the city, and to describe their function. Similarly, the charter designates the city manager as chief administrative officer and authorizes the city manager, with the approval of the city council, to appoint all heads of departments, offices, or agencies of the city, and to direct and supervise the administration of all such departments, offices, or agencies. What we've attached to this agenda documentation is an organizational chart, and I would point out to the public that if you compare Durango to other Colorado communities, only Fort Collins has as many diverse departmental operations as Durango. We provide full services, we run the airport, we do water and sewer, we provide the library, we have an extensive Parks and Recreation Department, we run a regional dispatch center, transit, and all of the activities that go under those departments. There are eleven city departments. So through this process, the city council has been advised of some changes at department head level, and the creation and establishment of two assistant city manager positions. And I think it's a reflection of the city's organization being nimble and flexible to cope with the complex problems that we address on a daily basis. These are significant changes. From the public's perspective, there has been no change in service delivery, and hopefully they'll recognize we still provide a high level of service. I believe this organization is well thought out and logical. It reflects a positive, goal-directed, and values-based organization, and if there are any questions from the council or from the community, I stand ready to respond to those.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask for any member of the public who wishes to speak to this issue. Seeing none, I will close the public testimony and ask for questions from the council. Comments?
No, we've seen this before. We've been advised by the city manager and the different department heads, it's just kind of restructuring, it's logical, I think, is the word you use, but it's also really clear. My question is, does this appear on a webpage somewhere?
Yes, it's on the city's webpage.
Okay, so if you had a question about where do I go or who do I ask, it's right there, and that's what I like about it. It's very transparent, and it's easy to follow, to figure out what I need to do and where I need to go.
What I really like about it, too, is the internal promotion from within our city staff. I think that's wonderful. If we could talk about that a second, I think it's powerful for our staff.
Councilor Yousaf, there are eleven departments, and I believe, I'm looking at all the department directors, Ms. Phillips was here before I got here, but she was promoted from within, and Ms. Metz, and I believe all the remaining, well, Chief Hassel came from the outside, and I think everybody else was promoted from within. Sarah Dodson's the Assistant Transportation Director, Phil Campbell was a promotion from within, Crystal Tweet, Human Resources, from within, Ms. Phillips again, from within, Airport Director, from within, Finance, Julie was promoted from within, Library, from within, City Operations, Levi has been a department head of several departments and inherited a new role a few months back. Kathy came from the outside about twenty years ago, and Kevin Hall was promoted from within, so was Nicole Killian, who's here as the planning, Assistant Planning, Truany Development Director.
And we would also mention the other assistant city manager, Amber Blake.
Amber Blake, yes, that is true.
Shows a great career track for one of the largest employers in our community. Excellent.
And I would remark that we get occasional emails from citizens saying, "Oh, why does the manager need assistance?" Anyone who has observed the function of the city manager's office, as we have, certainly Council Marbury and I have had for the last six and a half years, this reorganization actually has shrunk the departments from twelve to eleven. For a time, all, every one of those department heads reported directly to the manager, and we observed how extremely hard it had to work to keep all of this. And in light of that, the restructuring and sharing of those responsibilities with two assistants to the city manager seem altogether sensible. And also, we appreciate the manager's very long experience in many different organizations around the country, and really have a high degree of admiration for his management skills and have a great deal of confidence in the new structure.
I would point out, I neglected to mention Amber on the front end, but she was in Denver last Thursday, present at the Transportation Commission, just in case there were questions from the commission. We believe that having little insurance along the way makes for better success, and she also coordinated the packet that went to the commission with all the letters of support. Later in the agenda, you'll be hearing from Kevin Hall over his agenda items, and it's been a relief to have the two of them available and taking some of my workload off my plate, which is much appreciated.
Well, with that, Mayor, I will move to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the first reading at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a roll call.
Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Councilor Marbury.
Yes.
Councilor Yousaf.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yes. Moving on, the second item is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-five, Article Three, Section twenty-five dash one-one-four in the Code of Ordinance, City Durango amending the charges established for sewer service provision by the City of Durango Utilities Department. Mr. Lloyd.
Mayor White, members of council, Levi Lloyd, Director of City Operations. This is a public hearing to consider the City of Durango two thousand eighteen proposed rate and user charges for sanitary sewer services. The finance and utilities staff have proposed a three percent increase in base and flow charges from the previous year's level. The current year recommendation, the rate study for water and sewer services completed by Willdown Financial Services in November of two thousand fourteen and accepted by city council on December sixteenth, two thousand fourteen by Resolution R. Two thousand fourteen fifty-five, prescribes a projected two percent increase for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. However, in recognition of the two thousand seventeen rate increase of ten percent, instead of the studies prescribed twenty-five percent, in light of current projections of the Denver, Boulder, Greeley Consumer Price Index for September by the Colorado Legislative Council in Office of State Planning and Budgeting, budgeting of three percent and three point two percent respectively, staff has made the recommendation of a three percent increase. The proposed rate increase is projected to increase revenue to the sewer fund by two hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. This increase is in consideration of maintaining operational reserve goals, debt service covenants, keeping pace with increased cost of operations, maintenance, capital needs of the City of Durango sanitary sewer infrastructure. There is no fiscal impact associated with conducting a public hearing. It is the recommendation of the city manager and the city operations director that the city council by motion take public comment this evening and direct staff to prepare an ordinance for first reading at the next scheduled meeting of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. At this point, I will open the public testimony for input about the proposed increases in sewer rates. Seeing none, I will close the public testimony and ask for any comments from council.
I had a question for Mr. Lloyd. In your document, it says increase in the base and the flow charges. So you came up with a dollar forty-six for sewer. Can you explain how it's divided, or?
So, your sewer charges are based on a three-year average, January, February, and March of each year. The thought being that there's no use for irrigation, so this should be a reflection of what you're using and what is going into the sewer. So this base charge is based on three thousand gallons of usage, which is pretty standard usage in the City of Durango in the winter months, which results in a one point, a dollar and forty-six increase in your bill.
Okay, so you should say something about base and flow, and that's just going to be the dollar forty-six?
Yes, that's correct.
We'll see. Well, what is this Denver Boulder Greeley Consumer Price Index? How does that play into Durango?
I would have to defer.
I can take that.
Okay.
The thought that the council expressed is to keep current so that we don't fall behind in our expenses, and there's an index, it's the Denver Boulder Greeley CPI that we use as a reference. So that we don't fall behind and then find ourselves with a one hundred, two hundred, two hundred and fifty percent increase. I think this council, and the previous council, believe that they want to leave the next council better off than the way you found it when you were elected for office. And by indexing it, we will compare our expenses to the CPI and make those recommended adjustments.
Why was it, why did it go from two percent to three percent?
So, the two thousand seventeen rate increase was a ten percent increase, and the Willdown study had recommended a twenty-five percent increase. So we lowered that increase based on the consumer index, and the fact that we didn't do the full twenty-five percent and only did ten percent, we settled on a three percent increase this year.
Okay, it was a trade-off. All right, we didn't go to twenty-five percent, that would have choked everybody on the city council. So we had to do it by stages, and a dollar forty-six, based on three thousand gallons, let's say, it could be less, it could be less, couldn't it, if you only used two thousand gallons?
It could be less, yes.
It could be less, okay. All right, well, thank you for that information. I think the more we talk about real dollars and real cents, then people get an understanding of how it all comes about.
Mayor Potem, the flowage also relates to the non-residential users. They pay for sewer based on how much water they're consuming. Where residential, as Levi had pointed out, we deduct what we assume is your irrigation portion of the bill, but with businesses, they pay, if they're using a lot of water, that increases their sewer, because we assume that water ends up back into the sewer system.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information.
I think it's also worth mentioning that the twenty-five percent that we managed to scale back to ten percent last year was the culmination of a multi-year, multi-double-digit percentage increases. We do not foresee doing that again, and in fact, one of the goals that we really strongly have is to make sure that no council in the future ever has to do that. So there's another rate study in the not distant future. I expect that we will see that in the two thousand nineteen budget when we're coming up around this again, but just looking down the road, we are very likely, a year from now, to be talking about, again, an inflationary increase in ballpark three percent, but not the very, very steep increases that we've had in the last couple of years. So thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Thank you, council.
Well, Mayor, if there's no further questions, then I will move to direct the staff to prepare an ordinance for the first reading at the next scheduled meeting of the council.
Second. Okay, we have a roll call.
Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Marbury.
Yes.
Councilor Yousaf.
Yes.
And Mayor White.
Yes. The third legislative and policy-related hearing is a hearing to consider the granting of an easement to La Plata Electric Association Incorporated to accommodate power line improvements for the Gaglin Village area.
Yes, this is a routine granting of an easement, these easements, we've had several of these lately, and we'll have more coming down the bike.
Oh, excuse me, I jumped ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just happened to have scrolled my screen up in such a way that there were three items that appeared, and I went to the third one. Actually, nine point one point three is a public hearing to consider the adoption of the two thousand fifteen International Building Codes and the associated amendments to the city code ordinances. Ms. Killian.
Good evening, Mayor White, members of the council, Nicole Killian, Assistant Director for Community Development Department, representing also our building official who could not be here tonight. So this is a request from our department for an amendment to the city code ordinances by adopting the two thousand fifteen international codes. And the family codes includes the two thousand fifteen International Building Code, the International Residential Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, the International Fire Code, International Fuel and Gas Code, and associated amendments to the city code ordinances, and also to discuss with city council the direction we would like to go with the International Energy Conservation Code. La Plata County, as you all know, has just adopted the two thousand fifteen international codes that will be effective on January first, two thousand eighteen. They did not adopt the International Energy Conservation Code for fifteen, or the International Fire Code for fifteen, so they've chosen to adopt the two thousand nine Energy Conservation Code, and right now they're keeping the two thousand three International Fire Code. And a lot of the reasons why they need to keep the Fire Code is, is right now, they're studying it more, and they're going to spend some more time looking into it, but they don't have a municipal water system like the city has, so it does provide some complications for rural development. So they're still looking into that, so right now they're still on the two thousand three Fire Code. Currently in the City of Durango, we use the two thousand twelve codes, with the exception of the Energy Conservation Code, which we use the two thousand nine version. These were adopted in two thousand and fifteen for effective, no, two thousand and fourteen for effective two thousand fifteen date, so we've been using those for over a year now. On October tenth, staff did come to city council at a study session to discuss the codes with you, and at that time, we were proposing a standard And at that time, we were proposing a standard 2009 Energy Conservation Code based on discussions in a joint council BOCC meeting that was held on July 13th, where we decided we wanted to try and stay consistent with the county. And then at that time, we heard that some council members wanted us to look into the 2015 Energy Code and provide some feedback. So, that is included in the agenda doc, and I'll go through what we found on the 2015 Energy Code. Some of the things council asked us to look at at this study session were to provide a list of other communities that are using the 15 Energy Code, speak with the local home builders association, and provide examples of the economics of changing from the 2009 to the 2015 Energy Code. So, that is all included in the document. In terms of the background of codes, the city's been using uniform building codes. I believe our first one was adopted in 1967, and that was the 1962 Uniform Building Code. So, we've been using uniform building codes for quite a while in the City of Durango. In the 2000s, they turned into the I codes, international codes that we started using. And every three years, a new code family does come out. The city tends to be one version behind, just to make sure, let other communities work out the bugs and see how the new codes are working. So, right now, the 2018 codes are out, and we are looking at the 15 codes. So, to give you an example, we've always been a little bit behind on that process. And then 2009, a lot changed in the codes. And so, the city chose not to adopt the 2009 codes mainly for single-family residents. They were required sprinklering of all residential units. So, we did not adopt the 2009 codes. We skipped to the 2012. And then we did amend the 2012 to not require the sprinkling of every single-family residence, with the exception of twin buttes, which was negotiated with the Durango Fire Protection District as part of their planned development process. So, they're the only development in the city that for single-family that has to have every unit sprinkled. We are also proposing those same amendments for the 15 International Residential Code, which would be to not have the mandatory sprinklering requirement for single-family. So, in terms of the Energy Conservation Code, I did provide you a list in your packet of all the communities, counties, and cities within Colorado and what codes they are on. I won't go through the list, but just to give you an idea of where jurisdictions are right now with the Energy Conservation Code. Also received a letter from the Home Builders Association, which was attached, and their reasoning is why they'd like to be consistent with the county's 2009 Energy Conservation Code. And then provided you a little bit of information on some of the economics, one of the best pieces of information I could find on the economics of the Energy Conservation Code comparison between the 2009 and 2015 codes, which is from the Department of Energy. And they did one for each state, so this is just for Colorado. So, I did include that. And I know you received that in a previous, I think, Kev Paul sent me out previously. So, to touch on that a little bit, what this provided is it just provides some information on cost for the difference between going from the 2009 to the 2015 Energy Code, and then some of the comparisons on cost savings as well. So, I won't go into details of that unless you have any specific questions about it.
I have one remark.
Sure.
The agenda doc has a typo.
Oh, it does? I'm sorry.
That says the cost will increase to $6,526 and refers to Table 9. And no figure in Table 9 is much over $2,000.
That's the addition. So, the crawl space plus the heated basement plus the slab plus an heated basement will provide the all total of that amount of increases.
Wait, wait a minute.
Table 9, incremental construction cost. If you add all those figures up.
I don't, that's, no house has all of those features. Only one of them applies.
Oh, you're correct.
And for the other figures you've been citing were for, I believe, the first column in the table for which the number was $1,500.
Yes. No, you are correct. So, 1,811 would be that maximum if you did the heated basement.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for correcting that.
Yes, I saw that also and wondered about it.
Yeah, because I think that's crucial. Because my eyes just popped when I saw that number.
The cost increases.
The...
Yes. That's just for the construction, so what type of basement it is. So, whether it's crawl space, heated basement, slab, or unheated basement.
Yeah. But in our climate zone, the larger, you know, those numbers range from $1,550 to $1,810.
Right.
So, and turns out of the four heating zones, of the four climate zones, we're in the least expensive one, which also means that the benefits are slightly less, but still significant.
Thank you. Also, talking to Three Springs, builders at Three Springs, they say the average blowtorres test for a single-family, average home size, 16 to 1,800 square feet, is $1,250 for a blowtorres test. I believe there's currently two companies in the region that are performing those right now. And then if you have attached units, it is less expensive per unit. Other comparisons, I did get some information from the Department of Local Affairs on what the actual changes are for the 2015. I think one of the biggest ones that I've researched on the 2015 is there's currently, or there were currently two paths that you can take in terms of providing information that show that you meet the Energy Code. And one of those, there is the prescriptive, and what that is, is that's using the letter of the law, the code. So, you look at the Energy Code and you meet that prescriptively. And so, that's one option. And then there was a performance-based option, which is like the HERS rating and the blowtorres test is part of that option. For the 2015 Energy Code, there's a third option called the Energy Rating Index. And so, it's the ERI, and that gives another option for meeting the path to prove that you meet the Energy Conservation Code. So, that's a new change. They also have changes to Chapter 5 of existing residential commercial buildings, pipe-in insulation, daylighting controls, lighting operations and maintenance manual requirements for commercial buildings. One of those I was reading is about like lighting. If you're in a certain use type, you have to have sensors. So, when someone leaves their room at a certain point, the lights will turn off. So, that's one of the requirements. And then also, commercial air system economizers, which is part of HVAC system. So, looking at the, one of the big changes, which is the ERI or the Energy Rating Index, I did get a little bit of information on that based on ResNet, which is a website that is used a lot to determine a score for your energy conservation. And they're based off of the 2016 code. So, that's 100, and then zero is equivalent to a net zero home. So, the lower your score, the better, more energy conservation your home is. And so, that just kind of gives you for the climate zone 5B, the 2009, 12, and 15 differences in those scores. So, 15 dropped to 55, where 2009 was 82 per the ERI. So, I just wanted to throw a little bit of information that I could find out there for you guys to help make that decision. And the way we do amendments to the I codes is a list of ordinances. So, in your next city council meeting, you'll have ordinances with real specific details on what codes changes are being proposed. I'm going to give you more of a global list. But we'll provide those to you at your next council meeting. And so, I wanted to kind of go through what you'll see, what ordinances you'll see. We're working with the city attorney's office on preparing those ordinances. But for the International Building Code, we are proposing to amend it with a couple amendments. Probably one of the biggest ones would be Rule Point 3. We change the requirement to sprinkler entire building when new residential units are requested in a mixed-use building. And so, we've done this for the last two codes now. And what it does is if you have a mixed use and you only have two residences with it, you don't have to sprinkler that building. But once you have three or more units tied to a commercial use, you have to sprinkler it. So, again, this is going to be the third time we're asking to amend that section. The other big one for this is in 2012, Chapter 34 was our existing residential section or chapter of the building code, or existing building chapter. And the 2015 codes separated that chapter out into a lot of different chapters. And so, we're proposing to go back and adopt that chapter from the 2012 IVC. I'm looking at dirt to make sure I'm saying it correctly.
That's what I was...
Rather than bringing in the 15 codes to handle existing buildings. And so, that's another big change for IVC. Aren't there's any questions that you want me to go through all of them and then ask questions? Or do you have anything on specific codes?
I think, keep on going.
So, for the IVC, the residential code, one of the biggest ones again is taking out the requirement for sprinklering of all single-family residents. The other thing that I wanted to point out is we're looking at a new tiny home ordinance, and this is an appendix. We want it adopted as, really, the appendix covers building code issues, so egress. Right now, our code requires a minimum of 120 square feet for livable area and 70 square feet for a bedroom. And so, this actually just says anything under 400 square feet is considered tiny home, and you don't have to have that breakdown like we do under the regular IVC. There are some things that we probably will amend into that. We're still talking about it or using our LUDC. But number one is we don't allow homes on wheels in the city unless you're in a mobile home park. So, you can't live in RV in the city limits unless you're in a mobile home park. And so, a lot of tiny homes are built on trailers. And so, we want to make sure that our LUDC is still saying that they can't live on trailers in the city limits unless they're in a mobile home park. So, they need to be on a permanent foundation. So, they need to remove it and put it on a permanent foundation. They also have to have permanent water and sewer connections. They can't tie into a host bid. So, those, we'll make sure that it's reflective of what the Land Use and Development Code states for tiny homes. But otherwise, we want to fill out for the tiny homes in the new codes. In terms of plumbing, there's not, it's not a big amendment to the plumbing code or the mechanical code or the gas code. Fire code, we've been working with DSPD, and most of the changes are just to be consistent with the state of Colorado fire requirements. They also are adopting some appendices. If you want to know those, I have them listed, but I can give you that if you want to know. And then the big one is just Energy Conservation Code. Staff again is, we do recommend staying with the 2009, just based on, that's what the county is right now. However, it is a policy decision. And if the council is inclined to adopt the 15 code for energy conservation, we would recommend an effective date of July 1st rather than January 1st to give the industry some time to get up to speed with using the new code. So, with that, I can answer any questions, but it is the recommendation of the City Manager and the Director of Community Development at the City Council to follow public comment. By motion, direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary ordinances to adopt the 15 I codes and to make, except for the 15 IACC, and make the changes to the municipal code and ordinances as recommended. Staff does recommend using the 2009 ISCC for the time being.
Thank you, Ms. Killian. With that, I will open public hearing, open the hearing for public testimony about the international codes. If you would please give your name and address and keep your remarks to five minutes.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. My name's Ryan Fogly, 110 West 11th Street. I'm the president of the Home Builders Association of Southwest Colorado. I'd like to review the letter that we submitted in your old packet on November 9th, 2017. Durango City Council, on behalf of the 329 members of the Home Builders Association of Southwest Colorado, we'd like to address the discussion of code adoption for the City of Durango. We appreciate that the city has waited for La Plata County to complete its process so that there would be uniformity of code compliances within the region. I understand that you are now contemplating adoption of the 2015 IACC. We urge you to consider the work that's been investigated by local members of the building industry to custom fit the La Plata County building codes to the community that we call home. Our members have contributed countless hours of expertise to this endeavor, and we believe that adopting these codes as vetted and approved by the Board of County Commissioners is in the best interest of the city as well. Recap of code revisions of La Plata County. On February 16th of this year, members of the building community in La Plata County received the following invitation from La Plata County Building Department. Hello, all, we are going to have a Board of Appeals meeting this Thursday. We are starting to, we are starting the building code adoption process to approve the 2015 I codes and the 2009 IACC. If you cannot attend and have a comment, please email, and I can take your input to the meeting. Thanks, Dan. In the weeks that follow, local industry professionals, member of La Plata County Building Department, Board of Appeals, member roster is attached, part of your packet, to review and discuss sections of the 2015 I codes and, I'm sorry, sections. Section by section, input from industry experts is heard and decisions regarding best practices and cost considerations were made. Additional questions and answers, fact-finding meetings, work sessions were held within the community and with local officials. Members of the Home Builders Association were also present at Board of County Commissioner meetings to observe and comment. After a long and dedicated process, on October 10th, 2017, the county adopted thoughtfully amended revisions, 2015 I codes along with the 2009 Energy Code. Concerns in adopting the 2015 Energy Code include, but are not limited to, industry readiness, impact on attainability and affordability, and streamlined processes. Regarding industry readiness, although our industry is represented by many builders who have set high standards in energy-efficient homes, they are not representatives of the industry's readiness to be compliant with these standards and testing requirements of the 2015 Energy Code. Comments to this regard were noted by leading energy professionals of the Home Builders Association during the La Plata County Code revision meetings last spring. We shared these same concerns regarding the city's resources and readiness to inspect and enforce compliance with the 2015 Energy Code. From the highlights of the 2015 Energy Residential Code changes, for those jurisdictions that incorporate the model language of Chapter 1, the impact can range from better quality installation of insulation and air barrier, higher permit fees, to longer time for inspection. Regarding impact on attainability and affordability, although exact cost cannot be known at this time, new regulations have always had an impact on costs. With the additional increases that the industry is seeing due to recent catastrophes in the U.S. this year, these additional costs will not help us reach our goals of addressing attainable housing. Streamlined process. A great source of frustration amongst the builders and industry professionals is living by two separate codes within the same building community. During the county meetings, we heard examples from builders where oversights were created due to differences in requirements between the city and county. If both entities were on the same page, it would maximize effectiveness within the code and inspection process. The Home Builders Association of Southwest Colorado would like to encourage the city and county to come together with the home builders and unite the compliance requirements of our community together. Let us set a plan to review the 2018 Energy Code and work toward the next adoption together, setting goals for education and industry preparation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this issue? And I will close the public input and ask for discussion from the council.
Well, I was very pleased to see the home builders talk about being on the same page. That makes a lot of sense, you know, doesn't it? So, now that the county has gone forward, then the city is right here to make these same kind of decisions to make life simpler for you and for the applicants as well.
That's totally true for everything but the IACC in 2009. That's totally true for everything but the I E C C in 2009 versus the 2015 is, I think, the big vote contention amongst most of the industry folks and is portrayed very well with the Homer's Builders Association way in of the county's process, which I might be reminded that we've been at this for a couple of years. You know, we did have a study session, some public testimony about, and then we deferred at that point over a year ago to wait for the county to catch up.
Actually, it was two years ago.
Two years ago, that we had a public process and it was, so we decided to wait and put it off because the industry wasn't ready yet. So now we're hearing the same thing being rolled out by the county now that the industry is not ready yet. And so I know there's a couple others on board that felt like, you know, there's time for the industry to catch up. And that was a pretty long time, a couple of years now, for more folks to do blower door tests and get, become familiar with the new industry, just products and methodologies of construction to make it all happen in an affordable way that can be incorporated into our, into our homes for the rest of their lifecycle.
You know, when I read this list, we have a list of all these counties. Many, many counties are in 209, 206, 212. It's a hodgepodge of numbers and some don't have any codes. So to say that I don't agree with you about going forward to the 2015 I E, whatever it is, the Energy Code, I'm going to go for the 2015 on the I codes and 209 because I look at the rest of the world here and, you know, it's a hodgepodge again.
Let's look at the list again.
Actually, the hodgepodge includes roughly, the people on 2015 includes about half of our peers in the Colorado compacted communities as well as 25 other cities and counties.
I know, but we, the whole point of his message was be on the same page as the county. Make the builder's life more functional and easier to work with. So why wouldn't we do that?
Because we're concerned about climate change.
Well, I can be concerned about climate change, but I'm also looking at 300 and some odd builders who are saying, hey, we're making a living here, keep our life consistent.
They haven't been consistent up to the present time. They've had two years. We're talking about two and a half if we go to this. We've made a major commitment to climate. It's one of the top council goals. This is an opportunity to walk the walk. If we, we, two years ago, we, the builders came and said, you know, we're not ready. And they said, we're going to educate our, educate our members so that in 2017, we'd be prepared to do this. Now we're going into 2018 and they said they're not prepared. I'm saying if we set the standard, the builders were needed. And I wish we could stay on the same page as the county. I'm glad they come up to 2009. The, but I think we have asserted a position of leadership on climate. A couple of weeks ago, we had citizens deliver a thousand, a petition with nearly a thousand signatures, a thousand names, and I believe they had the actual petition signed. And 100 businesses saying, we want 100% renewable energy. Well, if we approve, if we defer for another few years, we're going to have 100 to a couple of 100 homes built that are expending 15% more energy for their whole lifetimes than they have to. And that's, that's energy that's got to come from somewhere. And it is coming for the, and it's short-term, it's coming from fossil fuels. And in the long-term, we hope it will be renewable, but that's much more renewable energy we have to have. So I, as much as I'd like to stay on the same page as the county, and I think that that's a good argument, but it seems to me that the county, we have always been ahead of the county in adopting our codes. And I think the builders have dealt with it. Some of them have been building wonderfully energy-efficient homes. There is, if the majority of the builders need to get into the 21st century, we ought to be looking at net zero homes, not 50% better than 2006.
Well, what are the numbers from Stafford then for the 2018? What's the impact on a?
I think we have presented here, one of them is the most important, you know, let's put it, take it out of climate change and put it straight into dollars. Value and affordability. It's been, it's been proposed that this is going to jack up the cost of a house, pure and simple. Okay, well, I agree, there's a blower door test, 1,250 bucks, another $1,000 for some of the insulation techniques. And I might add, when this happened in the, in the commercial industry, which this applies to as well, so it's just not housing, this applies to the other half of the construction industry, which is buildings, those Walmarts, those big boxes, those hotels that are being built in our community right now, they have no bearing on the cost of a house. So the cost of a house is half of our market or whatever percentage that is. But when you say that in the 2015 compared to the baseline of the 2006, and you can get a 45% less energy in a home following, you know, the 2015 versus what's being proposed as we keep the 2009, which is, will utilize 15 to 20% less energy, that's the, that's actually 25% difference. Mayor just said 15% more effective than the 2009. It's really more like 25%. That's savings to that individual that lives in that home and pays those energy bills every day. Not, you know, so yeah, we might have a 2,000, even $3,000 more expensive home, but that is going to be made up with energy savings over the entire lifecycle that that, every year that that house exists and the person that's in that house. So, you know, it's, I totally respect Ryan's portrayal of this and that comment is good. The county went through a long process. I wish that we'd have been more, myself included, more involved in that process. We kind of let them just go on their own, determine their own destiny on that front. But I think, you know, we understood that the council goals were more well-stated than certainly the counties were on this thing they took. And we've had a lot more discussion prior to their process in arriving at this conclusion. I just think it's time, you know? And I'm reminded when we adopted certain, certain buildings in town, lead certified buildings, my God, that was going to add so much, cut the cost of the project and never can be done, and it's going to be so much paperwork. And what happened is the industry responded. I mean, now, whether you're carrier or train or any of the, any of the products that are provided in buildings that we build today versus even five years ago, it's a totally different ballgame because they were mandated to do so. And so, and that's, every toilet is different, every faucet is different, every, you know, the industry just responded in an incredible way when they were made to do so. So change will not happen until you mandate it. And that's, that's why I, you know, I, and I, you know, I agree with the process and I'm always like to have one code fits all for the city and the county. But this is, this is something where we could take a lead and I think, and certainly it's.
Well, let me ask you, what are the?
Let me, let me say, the Twin Buttes as an example, we're doing it by up there, every house that's been built, which are a number of them now, are all complying with the 2015 just because it's the right thing to do. And those blower door tests are being done, the industry's is bronzing, those contractors figure out how to get it through and make it happen. And it's not rocket science any longer to get this thing done. It's just that the county is concerned about implementing that, about the backlash and the potential of increasing the cost of a house a little bit. I don't think it'll result in that dramatic of a change in the cost of a house. I think it's an educational process. Nobody likes change, me included. I'm an old dog, I don't want to learn a whole bunch of new tricks, but in this case, it's the right thing to do.
What's the difference? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember. I would suggest that, I sure have a lot of appreciation for all of you who've served on the council, and you've been through this for a lot of years now, it sounds like, and discussing this. And certainly, Councilor Brooke, with your experience as an architect in our community. The concern that I'm facing is that we have council, kind of contradicting council goals right here. We have council goals that wanted us to address energy and climate change, and we're working really hard to do that as a council. We're increasing rates for sustainability. We are going to do the greenhouse gas emissions. We're, we're taking steps to, to address that. And, and so I see that. On the other hand, we have goals for affordable housing, and I recognize, I recall that vividly through all of the campaign discussions and the desire for consistency and ease of process and predictability of process for our builders. And we want affordable housing, we want to encourage affordable housing. I very, very much appreciate what you guys are saying about energy. What I'm wondering, because I'm hearing, I have a lot of appreciation for what our home builders are telling us. They're the ones that are going to help us meet these goals towards, towards affordable housing and market rate housing in our community so that people can come here and live here, our teachers, our people who work in our service industry. And we really want to encourage that as well. I guess I would ask you, is there a way for us to encourage the county and our home builders to help us get to the 2015 codes over a period of time, like over the next couple of years?
Well, we started that three years ago and it hasn't happened yet. And that's all I can have to say about it, and it's disappointing. But let's talk about affordability too, because, you know, Dick's Mr. Climate, I'm Mr. Affordability. And I can say that that segment of the market that is low-income housing tax credits, for instance, low-income housing tax credits get rated on their competitively rated on their energy conservation measures. When you go in and do tax credit rehabs, you will not get tax, low-income housing tax credits awarded to you unless you already meet these standards because other people will in other communities. And I might say, the folks that do, just to recap, are the folks that have adopted the 2015 all the way across the board. Denver City and County, well, that's a lot of people, that's the majority of people on the front range, combined with Boulder, Centennial, Aurora, Arvada, that's the front range, the biggies, maybe they can afford it. But when you get counterparts to Durango like Pagosa, Gunnison, Walsenburg, of all progressive, unprogressive places, I guess, in the world that you would think of, have all adopted the 2015 and figured out how to get their builders to make this happen. Estes Park, Steamboat Golden, those are a number of communities that are all making this happen without problems. And if we need to look at possible adjustments or modifications to the code, I just think it's really important to, the way to get the county to come along with this is to pass it and, and say, okay, we're there, when are you guys going to get there? And along with the amendment that Stafford has suggested, if we do do this, take this measure that we wait till July to get it implemented, that allows me to take a class or two, Alby to take a class or two, we're all getting smart on this thing, a little smarter, just in terms of how we exactly roll this out, and take another six months to do that.
Mr. Mayor, could I offer an observation? A 2-2 tie is, doesn't move the item forward, and you might consider that, and I don't know if we have to act on this tonight, but you might want to have all five members present to, before you call a vote.
Well, can you separate it?
You can separate it, I guess.
And I've actually was thinking about that and realized that since we are on the 2009 Energy Conservation Code now, if we do not act on this, we're still where people are asking us to be.
Correct.
I'm not sure the conversation is finished. But I, but I think your point is well taken, and we might choose to continue the item to the next meeting.
I think that's a great idea as well. If nothing but, I am reminded not to get ourselves in that jeopardy situation where we can't take any more testimony. We've had, we started the hearing, we closed the hearing.
Right, it's been closed.
So I would expect from this discussion that there would be more, more information coming forward.
We could, we do have two weeks. And we could renotice. Is that not true?
When you're in a split decision, how do you?
Well, what happens is you'd have a motion either to support or reject the moving to 2015, and if the vote's two to two, the motion fails.
But we could separate the 2015 I code. And make it do that tonight, sir? Is that correct, sir?
Absolutely, because what we were doing on all of these, you may not recall the last time, but we had individual ordinances for each of those codes because we adopt them by reference. We had planned to bring them back for first reading on the 5th. One option would be we could present you with two versions of ordinances. I think I get a sense that we're all in agreement on everything except this one item. So we could have choice A or B, or even choice A1 and 2, but I think that to keep us on schedule to adopt these by the end of the year, not that that's necessarily a critical date, we would want to have first reading on the 5th, second reading on whatever that second meeting date is. So that's one option we could do.
We could make a motion tonight to move to just adopt the 2015 I.
Well, the ordinances aren't ready, but we were looking for, the staff was looking for guidance from council as to what, you know, what you're thinking.
So I'm not finished with the discussion. And before we entertain a motion, I would like to observe that, you know, one of the issues here is affordability. And the Department of Energy study that Stafford provided is very, very revealing. It provides multiple metrics that demonstrate the cost-effectiveness of the energy savings. The model they've constructed includes the cost, okay, there's an extra cost to build this home. And so they assume that that will just be thrown into the mortgage, so the mortgage will cost more. And after that, those additional costs and the down payment and the total mortgage, they find that the house begins to save money for the owner within one year. And the average savings, first-year savings are about $300. And going forward, the simple payback time is less than six years. If you translate that into a simple interest rate, it's 12% per year. You can't get, you can't get that anywhere. That is a terrific investment in the future of the home. It is a cost-effective strategy for a home buyer. We do have mechanisms for mortgage assistance, which we strongly support, and the additional cost is actually saving the buyer, the long-term cost, and that those savings continue to accumulate. It's fourth, well, I think the total for this typical average house was about $4,500 over the life of the 30-year loan, 30-year mortgage, after which it's totally back because you're not even paying back an additional cost. So I think the, I think in terms of affordability, you know, it's hard to say, oh yes, we're going to add some, add something else that increases the first cost of the home, but this one pays back as some of the other things, you know, we can't control market conditions, those are going to impact no matter what. But I do believe that it is, you know, this is a cost-effective effort. It meets our community climate goals. If we, the longer we defer this, and we've already deferred it a couple of years, the more housing that will get built that doesn't meet these standards. Fortunately, Twin Buttes, I mean, Twin Buttes committed to a better standard than this 10 years ago. We can do this, we're doing it today. Three Springs is basically meaning this, they have a slightly different variation on the scene, but they're already, that's the biggest fraction of our housing. And Three Springs is producing arguably the most affordable product that's being built today. So I, I don't think the affordability argument is very strong on this issue. And I wish we could get in sync with the county, but that's been true in the past. And I certainly wholeheartedly agree that if we do go to the 2015 Energy Code, we should indeed provide that extra time for its staff training, builder training, and everyone. that extra time for its staff training, builder training, and everyone. With that, I probably, I think it would be desirable, really, to have all five of us, so we have a decisive outcome on this rather than a default.
Could I offer a process suggestion? I need to ask the city attorney to weigh in on this. Since the mayor closed the public hearing to testimony, can there be a motion to open it back up and continue it to the fifth, so we don't have to read public? And that's what I think Counselor Brooke was-
Yeah, it just occurred to me that we had a hearing a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, where we, a lot more neighbors showed up the second time, not able to speak, because we had actually closed a public hearing the previous meeting. So if there was additional testimony that comes forth, I'd like to hear it. And, or at least let them know why we're not able to hear it, and not be awkward.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, the intent of having notice is obviously have people appear so that, you know, if it's continued on the public record at this point, then it allows folks to be aware of that, and we can publish it as such. So I don't have a problem with doing it that way, since we know we're likely to open it up again on December 5. So I guess I would support the idea of a motion to reopen the hearing and then continue it till, to December the 5th, to take additional testimony, and at that point, act on it.
How do we dissect out everything about the energy codes?
I would suggest that we have a motion to accept the I codes as presented by, or direct, but how's it go, is direct the attorney to prepare ordinances for all of the I codes, with the exception of the International Energy Conservation Code, and then deal with that in a separate motion.
Okay. You want to do it, or Sean?
And then we can reopen up the hearing?
Yes.
Go ahead, sweetie.
Okay. Then, Mr. Mayor, I move to direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary ordinances to adopt the 2015 I code, excluding the 2015 IECC. And that's my motion. I didn't say anything about the rest of it.
Yep.
I second that.
Okay.
Now, we have a roll call.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor, I then move to reopen the public hearing for the discussion of the 2009 IECC codes.
And a continuance?
And a continuance, yes, sir, until December the 5th.
I second, yeah.
Thank you.
Do we wish to ask the attorney to prepare alternate variations of the ordinance depending on the ultimate decision of the council? I think that would be, I think that would be efficient in terms of possibly having this, having all of this done together for January 1st.
The only glitch that I would see, and I would have to talk to Alvy about this, is that there are some internal references in some of the other ordinances. So I think that that is doable when I suggested it. So if, I would say that if it becomes impractical to do so because of internal references to the other documents, then we might have to wait. But I'm also sensing the council might be amenable to deferring the effective date on this particular item a little bit. So I don't see that it would be a great difficulty in adopting all of them. But the 09, excuse me, you know, changing the energy code, because the 09 will continue to be in effect until you adopt something new anyway. Again, we need to review, I need to, Suzanne's been working on this mostly, so I need to spend some time on it. So with the provision that there could be some difficulty in doing so because of internal references, I'll do my best to break two versions of that.
Yeah. Apart from possible cross-references between the codes, if we don't act on this, the 2009 Energy Code stays in effect?
That's right.
And it's clearly our intent that if we change the 2015, it will not be effective until July 1. And so if we get delayed getting that, except for that possible cross-reference issue, hopefully we can deal with that.
Good.
Okay. I'm not sure if we have a clear motion at this point.
I had moved about the continuance.
To re-
To reopen the public testimony. So was there a second?
There was.
Yes.
And it was also to direct the attorney to prepare alternative, if possible-
Alternative options.
-to prepare alternative options.
Okay. Yes.
So is that clear for the record?
Got it.
Is that okay with the second?
Yes, absolutely. And, yeah, I'm excited, you know, having been out of town most of last week, to follow up for the record. I am a member of the Home Builders Association, and I respect their process and their commentary. I just, you know, the, what I was disappointed in was the county's decision, but it was a bona fide process that they went through from February till today. And I'm only myself to blame for not being a bigger part of that process. But, you know, I think, you know, I'd like to talk to them a little bit more, have dialogue with the county between now and then, to, so I can welcoming this process, and I hope that works out well.
Okay. With that, we have a roll call.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Okay. The- Yeah. Now we can go to 911.4, which is a public hearing to consider the granting of an easement to Applied Electric, LaPlata Electric Association Incorporated, to accommodate power line improvements for the Gigline Gulch area.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is another routine, Applied Electric request for an easement over a small portion of property owned along College Drive near the intersection of Jenkins Ranch Road and College Drive. They plan to install a sectionalized encabinet, I can't say that I know what that is, within the existing underground power line to balance the electric load in the Gigline Gulch area. They also discovered through this process that the current underground line is not located within a granted, formally granted easement, and they're requesting that that easement be formalized as well. So we've attached a copy of the plan. We've asked them to pay what has become recently our standard request for granting of easements. The charter requires that any conveyance of property, including an easement like this, be approved by council and through the adoption of an ordinance. So this hearing is necessary step in adopting the ordinance to grant the easement to LaPlata Electric.
Okay. Right. So I will, at this point, open the public hearing and invite testimony on this issue. Not expecting none and seeing none, I close the hearing.
Oh, gee.
And ask for a motion, unless there's comment from council.
Mayor White, I don't have any comment. It's very standard. So I'm going to move to authorize the granting of the proposed easement to LPE to install power line improvements and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the first reading at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
I'll second that.
Now, we have a roll call.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
We are going to see a lot of ordinances.
Oh, no.
We are, yes. We'll be busy the next couple of weeks.
Next week.
Next, please switch to quasi-judicial hearings. This is, I don't, that made, in which the council essentially serves as in a judicial capacity regarding the land use issue. And the hearing is to consider the Garlic annexation initial zoning subdivision.
Good evening, Councilors Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. I was before you at the last meeting with a request for consideration of a contract with Bruce Garland for the property in question. Since that time, we have executed the contract. In order to actually close the acquisition, we acquired a parcel that doesn't exist right now. So there's some actions that need to occur on the property in order for us to move forward. And just for a little background, as you might recall, the parcel in question is down near Farmington Hill. And the reason for the acquisition was a future extension of the SmartOne 60 to end this river trail connection, as well as, we currently have a water tank on the property that we would like to have more than just an easement for. So the idea of the acquisition came forth, and we've been working with Mr. Garlic for quite some time. We have, as I said, the contract is squared away. What we need to do now, though, is establish a subdivision that properly reflects the property we are to acquire. Because the property is not in the city limits, we need to annex the property and provide some initial zoning, and then subdivide the property, so that we do it through our processes. So that's what we've queued up here for tonight as the next step in that process. And what we have before you here on this one is the annexation is in yellow here, 17.9 acres approximately. The dark line represents the subdivision. It's a little bit less, and you can see that the parcel that's on the right-hand side there with the reception number written in is not going to be part of the subdivision. It was previously surveyed. And this is maybe a little bit of a difference and distinction that was called up in the staff report relative to what the planning commission had seen. Initially, the subdivision included this additional 1.9 acres. Through conversations with the applicant, it was determined that because the property had already been surveyed, he preferred that it was not part of the subdivision. So we did a little adjustments towards the end of last week to get this squared away. But by and large, it's the same project. The subdivision looks a little bit different, that's all. The initial zoning, we're talking about, the upper lot 2 is what the city is acquiring. That would be put into a public zoning, approximately 11.3 acres. There is two lots up here, lot 2 is outlined as well as lot 1. Lot 1 will remain in the ownership, as we discussed at the last meeting, of the current property owner. It's a cell tower lease site. And at the time which cell tower ceases to exist, as technologies change, or there's other better options, and the site stops being used for those purposes, that lot 1 will convert into city ownership under public zoning. The lower area where it says lot 3, as well as the lot we currently talked about that shows the reception number on it, that will be zoned general commercial, 6.6 acres, and remain in the ownership of the current owner. The annexation process that we need to go through includes tonight, which is, staff reviewed the criteria for annexation, zoning, and subdivision. And what is in your staff report is really the details associated with it that went to the planning commission and is now before you. I'm not going to go into those details, but it did meet those criteria. We need to have a public hearing, and tonight represents that public hearing. Then we would need to have two readings of the annexation ordinance. And the code does allow us to do a public hearing and do the first reading on the same evening if it's generally a non-controversial matter. And in this particular case, we feel that is the situation. And in fact, in order for us to close on the property and complete this subdivision annexation zoning, by the time of closing before the end of the year, we chose to do the first reading tonight, which will be under a separate agenda item for you in a few minutes. Once we do the two readings, the second reading will be on the 5th, there's a 10-day waiting period, and then the effective date would be December the 20th on the annexation. I just reiterate some of the subdivision criteria from the staff report that Mark Williams prepared, but essentially, the proposed subdivisions in conformance with the adopted plans, policies, and standards of the Land Use and Development Code. The subdivision is compatible with existing or approved development in the area, and public facilities are available and adequate to serve the proposed subdivision. In fact, there's already water serving the lower commercial lots. There's two existing businesses on the lots that will be annexed into the community as part of this process, which is certainly benefit from a sales tax standpoint. They're served by water through implied consent agreement, but with the annexation, they will be under full development standards. When a redevelopment occurs currently, they will continue to operate as their current function. It's a car rental facility and a manufactured home retailer. And again, the conditions of approval, which are outlined in your staff report, I'm going to walk through this fairly generally, but these were what the planning commission supported, and they're reiterated for the purposes of tonight's public hearing. The annexation agreement includes language that should, if the lease for the cell tower terminate, then lot 1 will be conveyed to the city. As I just mentioned, the existing car rental and manufactured home sales businesses shall be allowed to continue to operate. The final annexation map shall include all easements, dedications, plat language, and those necessary to conform to city standards. Future development within the project shall comply with all applicable cities' land use, building, and fire code requirements. And then all verbal, graphic, written representations of the applicant and their agents are deemed conditions of approval. There really is no development plan here. This is a very standard condition of approval that are placed on these type of things, so it has been included in here. And I'm going to be lean on the city attorney here a little bit, in that we have a couple of motions here that we decided needed to be taken. And the first motion is to approve the annexation and initial zoning. Dirk, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the subdivision is saved for the second motion here. So we have a motion off a little bit. We would need to adjust this to say, by motion, approve the Garlic addition, annexation, and initial zoning, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. And the second motion then would be accurate in terms of approve the subdivision of the Garlic property on the terms and conditions described in the staff report.
Is there a need for the, to specifically include the plat in the second motion?
I don't see any harm in doing so.
Right. And if you wanted to say approve the subdivision plat, that would be fine as well, because it accomplishes the subdivision process. Just to be clear, my concern was we wanted to, it's a chicken and an egg. We need to annex it before you accept jurisdiction, and then we can subdivide it. So that's the reason for the split of the motions.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Is that, I assume that's-
That's probably the extent of the staff report, unless you have questions. Happy to answer.
I think we're good. At this point, I will open the hearing for public testimony. I see Ms. Laurel in the audience, possibly as a representative of the applicant. She's declining to present. I mean, you're under no obligation to this. I mean, I think Mr. Hall's done a good job, and we saw this project two weeks ago, so we know what we're dealing with. But thank you-
If you have questions?
Yeah. But thank you for being here. Any other member of the public wish to speak? Next, I suppose we'll close public testimony and ask for any comments from the council.
Well, I think that this is a project that's been a long time coming, you know, not just a month of year, but maybe 10 years of hard work by our planning department. And we're looking at a trail connection. So this is all worthy of our going forward with this. Thank you, Mr. Hall, for your long-term work. And I want to thank the Garlic family also for making all this work for the city of Durango.
I'd make a motion to approve the Garlic addition, annexation, initial zonings, and subdivision plat, subject to the conditions outlined in the committee development planning staff report.
Second?
Now, we have a roll call.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Marbury?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
And a second one? Ready to go?
So we don't have to reopen a hearing?
No.
We just-
Go for it.
I would make a motion to approve the subdivision plat of the Garlic property on the terms and conditions described herein.
My second?
Now, we have a roll call.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Marbury?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
And that concludes the hearing section of the meeting. The next item is introduction of ordinances.
Is there a number, Mr. Nelson?
And this is of number 11, item 11.1, an ordinance approving, now this moving on to the ordinance, approving the annex- to the ordinance, approving the annexation and initial zoning for the Garlic Family Living Trust, parenthetically, Garlic addition to the city of Durango, and declaring an effective date.
Yes, this will be ordinance O-2017-16. And I can read it, an ordinance approving the annexation and initial zoning for the Garlic Family Living Trust, Garlic addition to the city of Durango, and declaring an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I will move, if you start with you, to, to approve ordinance 2017-16.
Second.
Now, we have a roll call.
Counselor Yousaf?
Yes.
Counselor Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
And we have another ordinance, which I think I will just simply, rather than reading it twice, offer to the attorney to read it by title.
Okay, this is ordinance O-2017-17, an ordinance approving the annexation and initial zoning for 73 Jameson Drive, Pocket Electric addition to the city of Durango, and declaring an effective date.
Mayor, I will move to approve ordinance 2017-17.
Second.
Now, we have a roll call.
Counselor Yousaf?
Yes.
Counselor Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
And finally, we have an administrative matter from Mr. Nelson, discussion and possible action regarding the re-adoption of an emergency ordinance of city of Durango, establishing temporary regulations and enhanced penalties for violation of provisions of city code related to the use, placement, and security-
I think there's a, a typo in this heading, but, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mayor, but I think that we did discover a typo there as well.
I guess I have just opened the, the doc, so I, I think I'll continue where I left off. Related to use, placement, and security of trash containers, and to require strict compliance with those provisions to minimize conflict with wildlife in the city, and declaring an effective date.
Yes, this flows out of council direction at last Tuesday's study session, to re-adopt the prior emergency ordinance that expired earlier this month, for, actually, yeah, earlier this month, that's right, for imposing additional penalties on those who violate the provisions of the code related to keeping of trash containers, you know, to, and to require strict compliance with the provisions to minimize conflicts with wildlife. So, this emergency ordinance is essentially identical to the last one that you adopted, with some just updating in terms of what's happened in, in the interim. So, with that, this would be ordinance 2017-18.
Eighteen.
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 Well, I propose this because the bears are not asleep, number one, and we know that some people have not gone and gotten their bear-proof container, which we urge you to do at this moment in time. So, this is no spanking of your hand, you're going to get another $100 fine, and you will get an automatic bear-proof container with this emergency ordinance, and it lasts, I believe, 60 days?
That's correct, we set it to expire on January-
Something or another.
Something or another, January, I'm sorry, I should have looked at that date.
I believe it was the 18th.
It's the 18th, that's right. And we hope that the bears will be hibernating by then.
Yes. Well, thank you for that preparation.
Sure.
With that, I move to approve emergency ordinance 2017-18.
Second.
Now, we have a roll call.
Counselor Yousaf?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
And that concludes our business for tonight. The time is 8:25.